Appreciate that. Yeah, so, one thing I want to make clear, this is by no means a perfect document. Never will be. But our hope is to continue to refine it to the best of our abilities prior to adoption. And since it is a living document, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for folks to help improve it, both leading up to adoption and then afterwards, as every land use code goes through a lot of different tweaks after it's been adopted. Couple of clarifications I wanted to bring up regarding what Matt was talking about. One thing, we left the CBEO overlay district in there, we actually have taken that one out. That's been incorporated actually into some of the other zones within the downtown area. So we actually did remove that particular overlay district. I know Matt talks about minimum density requirements. Some of you might be asking the question, well, you know, what if I have a large lot and I just want to put one home on there or something along those lines, but I can't build two or three that might be required because I have a larger lot? We do provide an opportunity there for folks to subdivide the lots, so that you have a smaller one that will actually meet the minimum density, and then you have another lot or multiple lots that could either be sold off, redeveloped in the future, whatever it may be. But in any case, it would require some procedures there. Matt also mentioned height and provided that graphic. In some cases, the allowed, maximum allowable height is going to be dependent upon providing affordability. So in the downtown area, there's some areas where the maximum height, the base maximum height is going to be a little bit taller because the buildings are a little bit taller historically and currently. But it does allow a lot of extra flexibility in some areas of potential redevelopment to go even higher, maybe an extra story, if affordability is built into the project. And that's the case out on the highway in certain areas as well. And the right parents setback, something we've heard a lot about from folks. I do want to emphasize the fact that we are talking about anything west of Highway 50 along the South Ark of Arkansas. It's currently not proposed for anything east of Highway 50 along the South Ark because of really the development that's already happened there and what is existing and the procedures that those landowners have already gone through in that particular location. Matt mentioned the fact that it is, the setback or the area of protection is 100 feet off of the main stem of the Arkansas. That's a setback of 40 feet directly off the Ark where basically very little to no development can happen. And then there is 60 feet additional beyond that where it's limited as far as what can happen along the South Arkansas. It's 75 feet of that initial setback area, that high level of protection, and then 75 feet of a secondary buffer, again, west of Highway 50. I think that jumps into, gets me to going back to the zoning map here. So, I want to just take a little closer look, and apologies for the lack of resolution on this, but what the zoning map process is, is trying to align this map with the land use code and all the districts that are called out in it. It takes a lot from the Future Land Use Map, which was adopted a couple of years ago, and that's on the left-hand side. It talks about the types of uses and the intensity of uses that are anticipated for the community in the years to come. We have taken that Future Land Use Map as a guide to come up with the conceptual zoning map that's on the right. This was actually a slightly older version than what is up here on stage, so you'll be able to see some of those differences. One thing I want to point out, this is actually, again, a slightly older version of it, just blown up, of our draft zoning map. We have this fantastic tool that is currently on the city website. It's called an Experience Builder, and I'm actually going to try to pull that up real quick, so you all can see it. If you go to our site, this is done through a company called Conveo, and what it is, is it's a tool that allows you to see the difference between today's zoning map and the proposed zoning map for tomorrow. It also provides an opportunity to go in, and you want to zoom in and look at, you know, your particular parcel that you might have, you can click on that parcel. It brings up a bunch of information that we have already loaded in through GIS, accessible from the Chieftain County Assessment Site, and it also allows you to go in, you can provide us a comment about it. You really don't think that that particular parcel should be zoned R2, you think it's really meant for R3 or wherever it may be. You can click here, give us your feedback, and it all collects in one spot for us to be able to read through. This is a whole-scale zoning conversion, and so we need to provide the public with an opportunity to be able to talk with staff at least about potential rezonings. Now, a lot of the parcels out there throughout town are not changing. I would say that only about, maybe a quarter of all the parcels throughout town are technically changing their zoning, maybe a little bit more than that. Certainly not all of them. But this is a fantastic tool. I wanted to just show you the slider for a second here. It's going to be hard to pick up on this screen how things change, but it gets a little bit more apparent as we go to the right, when certain things with some of these new zoning districts actually change as you slide it across. Matt talked about the overlays. A lot of our overlays are in the downtown area, and you can actually see how the number of overlays were reduced because of how we incorporated, simplified it into the land use code. And this is how it looks today. So we were talking a little bit earlier about one of the goals of the Future Land Use Map, differentiating between Highway 50 and Highway 291, First Street, Oak Street. Today on the zoning map, they have the same zoning. Well, within the draft zoning map, if I can get into this, you can see that First Street, Oak Street is in the pink, mixed-use neighborhood, whereas Highway 50 is the red, mixed-use highway. This is the old one, this is the new one. It's a really cool little tool, and we really encourage everybody to go on there, play with it a little bit. If you have comments about certain areas of town that you want to, you know, provide us with a little bit of input on it, or your own particular parcel, please, please do. Let me get back to...
I'll get back to it.
We hope to have everything available, all the surveys and the tool, up for probably the next month-ish, and try to advertise the fact that this is going on, we're collecting this information. Okay, so, back to... Back to blue screen, there we go. So a few more things about the zoning map. It was done through a fair, even process, based primarily off of the Future Land Use Map that was adopted already. It differentiates that zoning in character along Highway 50 and Oak Street that we talked about. Matt alluded to it, there's some new zone districts that we didn't have. The fact that we didn't have, actually, a parked and open space zone was pretty mind-blowing to me when I first got there. So, we're creating one of those. So we're actually going to have a zone district that is specific to parks and open space. We have a new agricultural reserve zone district, which is really meant for some of those areas that might come in in the future with no specific plan if they get annexed, so they can continue doing agricultural uses on the property, maybe even potentially some being rezoned to that in the future in other properties. Mixed-use center, there's a few areas on the Future Land Use Map along Highway 50, mainly at those intersections with more collector roads at Oak Street, New Street, and Holman Ave, that are identified for some higher densities and higher intensity uses. Those are each actually separated by about a mile each, and really appropriate locations for doing something a little more walkable, more intensive their use. Mixed-use highway is the zoning that is across the, go back, across the highway itself in the red, much more vehicular, automobile-oriented, right? Because it is a state and federal highway, and where that's not going to change. But it does also allow for that mix, more of that commercial mix with residential out there. Mixed-use neighborhoods, it's kind of a transition zone around the mixed-use highway zone district before you get into the R2 residential neighborhood, as well as around the downtown, immediately outside of it before you get into the R2 neighborhoods. And then community facilities, just something that really helps identify where public-owned facilities are. That would include some of the ones like the Riverside Park Pool, the Aquatic Center, Chieftain County Building, which is currently in the residential district. A lot of these places are in residential districts, and it just does not make sense. R3, go back to this, R3 is in the orange, and it's also identified in the Future Land Use Map for future annexable lands that are within our municipal services area. But these are spread out around town areas, targeted areas for potential future higher-density development, more apartment buildings, that may not blend in quite so well, fit so well in the downtown or outside of the downtown or historic area or wherever it may be, in the older areas of the town. Again, there's a few things that need to be tweaked from this map that we corrected on this one. Talks about the mixed-use center target areas. And then the last thing, just, I think I mentioned earlier, the only industrial zoning really in town, the primary industrial zoning is right outside of the downtown, so that has been removed from that area. Those have been converted primarily to mixed-use neighborhoods, which will still allow for some light industrial, sort of cottage industry uses, but not the heavy industrial uses that would be allowed in the industrial zone district. And that is moved more to the outer extents of the city. Okay. So, before we turn it over to Q and A, just going to go into some of the upcoming input opportunities and the processes from here on out. Tonight, you'll have an opportunity to come fill out comment cards and your initial impressions around the code, what you've seen, what you might have read if you did go on the website already. We have live, right now, a survey on the draft code, and it's very basic, right? So you have some sections that you're particularly interested in, you can go ahead and read through that code, go to the survey, and it's broken out for comments according to that section, those specific sections. Please feel free to go on there, make those comments, those come in to us, be able to collect it and put it all together. The Conveo Experience Builder slider tool that I showed you all, that is also in the same place on the website, you can go on there, make comments about the specific zoning of individual parcels or areas. Once we get this information over the next month or so, we will figure out if there are certain areas, issues, and topic areas that rise to the top that really needs more community conversation or attention. And we're open to having some more follow-up meetings targeted on those particular areas as needed. And then, if folks have big concerns around the zoning of their particular properties, you have an ability to make an appointment with staff and talk to us about that, and we can determine whether or not that's going to be part of the proposal or not. And then, lastly, we hope to have a final draft available in the next few months that folks can do another survey on, that will have available via the website. And this will all proceed going forward to Planning Commission, probably for at least one, if not multiple public hearings, to discuss the land use code, to come up with an overall recommendation, any potential changes, and will then be passed off to City Council for their ultimate approval. We are at this point anticipating that that will happen sometime late in summer. Again, just a reminder about the project webpage, go to the cityofsalida.com, go to Community Development, go over to Land Use Code Rewrite, and you can find out all the information there, future showings, Wicked, whatever it might be, available. All right. Questions and answers. Matt, if you want to come on up and we can try to take your questions. Ben, can we put the lights up as well? Yeah, that'd be awesome. Really good stuff!
Yeah.
Kristen, could you go ahead and light the microphone off to folks with their hands up, just so we can capture this on audio and see if we can make sure everybody is ready. You might need to turn it up a little. No?
I can talk while...
There we go. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Wood. And first, I may not agree with everything, but I am impressed by the amount of effort and thought and effort, well, effort, use, I keep using that word, that has gone into this, so I compliment you on that. As one of the slides pointed out, this is kind of a big deal. I am here tonight, but I didn't frankly, only because I've been following the process, I did not see a whole lot of press coverage saying, "Show up tonight for this big meeting." So what kind of publicity campaign do you have in mind to make sure that everybody in town knows what's going on there?
That is one of the challenges of communication when it comes to city government, is that we are not the media. We have our own media, and we use that to our best advantage. This meeting, for instance, has been advertised in our city newsletter, the Salida Standard, it's been on our Facebook page. We have put out multiple press releases about it, not all of which has been picked up by the media, because maybe it's not as interesting to them or whatever the case may be. We did buy ads in the paper that have been running in the paper for the last couple of weeks. I mean, sure to go in door-to-door at this point, I think I'm not quite sure, you know, what more we need to do to try to get the word out there. We're going to continue to try and open the suggestions on that, but, you know, a lot of it, we do rely on face-to-face communications, word of mouth, et cetera, to get the word out there, but there's only so much you can do against the media when they choose to pick up.
Water and soil, yeah? I mean, they could put these there, those in there, and water and soil, and everybody would be...
Yeah, we've talked about that. Part of the issue with that particular thing, advertising for this meeting, is simply the timing. We weren't 100% sure of the timing of this meeting, and there's a lot of that that goes out well in advance, a month in advance, et cetera. But for upcoming input opportunities, or at least driving people to our website, that's a wonderful idea and something we've talked about. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Adrienne Hunter with P and L State Group. So I saw that ad in the paper, which is how I knew about it, and Hunter and I kind of talked about it, but I talked to probably over a dozen real estate agents today that I ran into and said, "Hey, are you guys familiar with that maybe, or what?" That might be a good opportunity. I mean, we have a Realtors Association for a purpose that does a great job communicating to a group like Realtors who can also communicate with a large part of the public, that can spread the news. That might be an option, because it was pretty low-key, so.
Yeah, appreciate that. We had a number of Realtors that were at the What's Up Salida Coffee Talk the other day, and we've been talking about it a little bit, and that's a great idea. Over here, to the right.
When you talked about temporary setbacks, is that for undeveloped land that's going to still be developed, or does it pertain to property that's already developed?
So, if there's development already on the property, leave it, within those setback areas, we're not going to make any of it removed. But if there's new development, even if there's already a home there, and somebody wants to put in an accessory building or another building on the site within those setbacks or buffer areas, once this is adopted, adopted and effective, those will come into play.
So, that would pertain to existing developed property like along the river in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And what's this map framed on the floor over here?
That's the current zoning map that we have, so...
It different from the one we had on the slide?
Yeah, the colors come out a little bit different between the slider tool and what we have for the printed zoning map, but they all reflect the same, thank you, they all reflect all the same zoning. And so, if you went to the legend around the right-hand side, you'd see everything would be the same. But following Q and A, you can come up and take a look, a closer look at that to compare the two. Other questions?
Mike Sagaski, and I have a question on parks and open space. If you have some sections in there that have been, the old Lowery 80 acres to the east of the river, that isn't shown, so that would be parks and open space, and there's been trails developed on that.
Sorry, which one are you talking about?
It's the, if you go to Oak Street and just go across the river to the east, did you have an 80-acre parcel there?
Yes.
Okay, that's city land, we bought that 10 years ago.
Yep.
And then they also bought another 63-acre, just adjacent to that, and we don't show that, and it...
Can you look at the slides to the right a little bit further, Ben? Yeah. This is the one you were talking about?
No.
Nope.
Do you got it pointed?
Oh, down there.
Right there where the slide's on, that's the 80 acres.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then next to that and going down, you have another 63. Those are all city...
Yes, you're right, yeah, yeah, okay.
My question is, is do you have a plan for what's going to go in those acres, that land there for parks and open space? Is there a plan already? Does Diesel have some of this?
I don't know the Parks and Rec plan, you know, off the top of my head, and I know that some of those properties up there actually have some restrictions on what can be done, and it's actually quite restricted, you know, to, primarily to trail use out there. So, at this point, there's no intention of, anything I'm aware of, any additional development out there. The land use code, though, will provide generally what can be done within the Parks and Rec open space zone district, but some of those properties may not be able to because of those additional restrictions on it.
The 63 acres, that was spot from Union Pacific, we have restrictions. The 80 acres over there, by the spot from Lowery, I don't know if they're doing, it's probably possible.
Yeah.
And we built some, you know, some freys for those, too, maybe some other opportunities.
Yeah, it's a good question. I would direct that to Parks and Rec to see if they have any additional plans down the road. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, I'll have to get that corrected. Some of the GIS stuff got put together pretty recently, so we're definitely going to have a few things around it being fixed. Who else? Marja.
Hi, you guys did a great job making zoning exciting. I, and I guess this is from a housing authority perspective, not from a committee perspective. In terms of thinking of some of the state policy that is coming into effect, there's sort of a few things that I'd like to have discussion on, I guess, and one is, even though, you know, you've elected in Prop 123, this current edition of the plan or the zoning code doesn't include the expedited review, and we're going to need to do that by 2027, and so I'm not sure why. There is, if you didn't know, a $50,000 incentive to adopt that. And so, from my perspective, thinking about the larger projects that have gone through that have had 50% of their units dedicated to affordability, I would love to see that as an option before 2027. Not sure why it's not in there, we'll discuss that. And then the second is, again, going back to that ADU incentive, it's great, I was going through it while we were sitting here, and there's still one little thing that will make it so that we can't elect into the Opportunity Fund, that will then allow individuals to access funding for ADUs, and that would be, as far as I can tell, I think it's the parking, no, maybe not the parking department, but the...
The setback.
ADU, no, no, I didn't see the setback, I didn't look at setbacks. So maybe the setbacks, but you can have to allow it within every zone district where you allow a single family, and currently it's not permitted in Ag. So maybe just going through that, if the policy direction is not to move in that direction, allow that to opt in and out by June 2025. And then taking my affordability hat on, putting my delicore zone hat on, it would be 2026, January 2026, we have to have compliance with non-functional turf, all of that guidance, I'm on the technical team, that guidance is sort of available, I could give it to you, but it's not in our code, and we would have to update our code by January. So those are the three things that I sort of saw.
And I will encourage you to put those under the comments and make sure that we hold on to those, but for those of you who are not aware, about a couple of things that Marja was talking about, the state has Proposition 123, which encouraged communities throughout the state to opt in, to be eligible for a variety of funding sources, primarily towards affordable housing. And we did that, we were in fact the very first city in Colorado to do so, and we have benefited from it already. But the, to answer your question about the required expedited review for highly affordable projects, thus far it's just been a capacity issue. We've had a lot of turnover within the department, we're trying to just provide this draft code and hopefully get this thing through, but Kristen is now our Housing and Land Use Planner, and one of her tasks is actually to focus in on that expedited review, which is required of all Prop 123 communities, as you mentioned, by the end of 2026. We absolutely are planning on trying to get something drafted up this year, this summer and fall, in order to be eligible for that $50,000, basically the state's giving away 50 grand to communities that are able to adopt this expedited review before the end of the year, so we're well aware of that. On the ADU side of things, that's another capacity issue really, is what it has come down to. What that is, there's another program that the state has, that's going to provide monies for folks to be able to put towards the construction of ADUs, and however, it comes with certain caveats and certain regulations that communities cannot have, that we have currently. So it's a conversation we've been having a little bit with Planning Commission, hope to have a little bit more. Challenges in the timing, they're wanting to get those folks to opt into it by June, and frankly, between the land use code and we're starting to see huge influx right now of other development applications, I'm down a quarter of my staff due to budgetary issues and everything else, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to pull that off, but it is something I think we can take a look at for maybe future rounds at that point. The turf piece, I'm aware of it, we haven't had a chance to really look at it incorporated in here, but it is something, one of those things I think we could probably do, if it's really quick, we might be able to insert it during this process, if it's a little bit more involved, it might be a tweak that happens after the fact.
If I can help, if I can help with that.
Yes. Right on, appreciate that. Who else? I think you got something burning out there. Suzanne, you got a question, why Ace Hardware, we're showing twice in the same presentation? I didn't, I didn't even notice. That was not on purpose, I think that was a bit of a vestige of all of them.
So I have a question about the planning of redevelopment.
About what?
The PDs.
PDs, yeah.
Yeah, so I understand it'll be a little delay, right?
It is... It is going to be a district unto itself.
Okay, gotcha. I think I misunderstood that. So my question is going to be...
It is an overlay. Okay, sorry. Can't keep it all.
No worries.
It's harder to remember.
I took a few notes in that one. Just curious, you know, just thinking about the Two Rivers development, how they have a mix of commercial and that whole piece. And obviously, we have some mixed-use options along the highway and whatnot. But say, growth continues to expand. You know, we have the pre-annexation on the map. I had seen, if you kind of sprawl towards, post-Balmar, I have 50. And in each direction, there was some anticipatory pre-annexation areas. Would it be possible, outside of that mixed-use, and I haven't been able to dig into the details of it all, to have another like a Two Rivers scenario? It seems that this would be kind of restrictive towards another project like that.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think part of the, what we tried to accomplish through this draft code was to take some of the barriers out of the code that had required folks to go through a PD in the first place. Just one example, for instance, is the code as it is does not allow for private drives. And so if you have one private drive within your development, you have to come in through a planning development process. We're sort of backing off on that in this particular draft to allow for that outright as long as you have your minimum frontage and all the connectivity that is required. And so we're hoping that it makes things easier so there's not so much on the procedure side of things to come in and do things like this. Back to the flexibility aspect, right? But if there are those parcels out there that do want to come in and do something pretty unique that really isn't contemplated or even potentially permitted outright through the code, as long as you have a parcel that is, right now, where we set a minimum at two and a half acres, you can come in and do that. And it's a negotiated process that ends up being negotiated between both planning commission and the developer, and then eventually council on the developer. So that option is still there to do something along those lines. But the hope is that some of these new zone districts and their allowances allow for an outright. So we really have to see it. It's going to be case by case. Yeah, please.
Just one other piece on that. One of the reasons why we switched from a base district to an overlay district is because when you structure a PD as a base district, it encourages people to just throw out the zoning code altogether and say, "What can I get? What's my negotiation?" And you start from scratch. And when you structure it as an overlay district, you start with that base district as your foundation. And then you require the applicant to specifically say, "These are the pieces that I want to negotiate on." And so you've got that underlying level of consistency with the zoning map, and then that's your starting point, as opposed to just a black box. And so that's the recommendation, that's the reason for that recommendation to move to an overlay. It's not intended to make them harder to do necessarily. We have raised the bar, like with that minimum size threshold, that goal mission. But it's just intended to make them not so much a free-for-all in the future. And we should also clarify, you mentioned Two Rivers. That's not going to change. That's still, the Two Rivers and Veneto, we do? I can never...
Veneto.
Those are the two that are legacy PDs that'll stay as districts, and then future ones will be on those.
There's a few more other than those as well, but no last one. There's a bigger one. Yeah, sorry. Is it overlay? I don't know where. Am I right or am I wrong? Anybody else got a question, concern, threat? All right. Let it go. I'm sure. Okay. Quick, Reals, go.
Thank you. I have more of a comment, I guess, than a question. I just want to say thank you to our community involvement team for putting this together. It has taken a lot of time, and I just want to say thank you. And also, I did bring some treats from Sweeties. In the little hallway area. There's baguettes, leftover bagel bread, and sweets for anyone, please to get home. I guess, run away at the end of the evening from Sweeties, so I'd bring it with me here. But yeah, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Reals. Reals is also not only on city council, but she's also on the land use advisory committee that we talked about earlier, as is Justin. So, again, thanks to everybody who's been involved with this. I know the room is full of primarily people who have been involved and really appreciate all your input and work on this thus far. It's not done, so we got ways to go. We are aiming to try to get this thing wrapped up this summer. Matt, you got anything else you want to add? Before we invite people down to take a closer look at the zoning map, talk to us about specific stuff? You got one more?
Are you guys going to have more meetings? My name's Breno, I'm asking to see if there's more meetings. I think we can get a lot more people on here. I think for the next meeting, so really the people on the community can really have a say on what's important, what we want. And I think what Marjorie was saying earlier was definitely vital to see if this actually all takes effect. So thanks, Marjorie. And I thank you guys for your time. But whether it be another meeting, you guys are advertising it was going to be more or multiple meetings.
Yeah, there's going to be more input opportunities at this point with the survey that's on the website and the slider tool and input that you can put into that particular application. Once we've gotten that initial round of feedback, we're going to identify those things that are really rising to the top that we need to talk more about. And we do hope to have a meeting, assuming that there are things that rise to the top, which I'm sure there will be, to talk about those targeted issues and provide folks, you know, a little bit more of the big picture about what the land use code is attempting to do. So stay tuned. Look at the website every once in a while here in the next month or so. And we'll do what we can to take some of your suggestions as far as the advertising and the communication around it. We will be talking about it at planning commission and city council meetings as well. So hopefully, people can tune in and get the word out, and we can draw a bigger audience next time. Thank you. Okay. All right. I appreciate it all. Come on down to look at the maps. Watch your step, do your step. Yeah, there is a step down here as well. We have three of the codes actually laid out here. We've got some of the input forms, if you want to fill those out. Yeah, right. So, mind you, the old chain protection layers, the overall era, right? And then the entire...